This is a brand-new board. The board really directs how we want to go, the changes, the procedures and things like that. So as we go along, the board can decide, we'd like to have this stuff done this way. We want to change. And the board as a group will decide, such as meeting nights. Does the Thursdays work for everybody at 6:00, first and third Thursdays? Is that bad for anybody? No. And then we'll try to limit the site walks. Saturdays used to be the time we'd try to focus on the site walks, the second and third Saturdays. And we'd try to, I'll try to get as much information as I can between photographs and maps and things like that to limit the site walks because I know your time is precious. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for volunteering for the board. It's a lot of hours and it's great to see that so many people stepped up and wanted to be part of the board. Did you get anybody? No. So hopefully he's on his way. I figured Gavin's interim vice chair would run that for, I think, the bylaws call for elections in October-ish or so. So we'll get the board moving forward and we can kind of see if there's somebody that wants to be a chair and a vice chair, secretary, and then we can kind of go for their. Right now, the bylaws calls, it has to be a full member to be able to be chair, which would mean the alternate wouldn't be able to. But that's something the bylaws, you guys change. And maybe one of the alternates would make an excellent chairman. He wouldn't be a voting member, so his focus is really running the meeting. And that takes a lot of finesse, I guess is the best way to say that. Exits, you guys came in out this way and the bathrooms are right down the hallway if you guys need anything. You guys feel safe? Spacing's good, sanitizing and all that? My name's Ken. I know most of you guys. We've dealt with a lot of people over the year. I'm your director of planning and code enforcement. I've been here for 23 years now. Brenda's my assistant, my deputy. She handles most of the flow as it comes in through, does all the answering of questions and handles most of the violations. She's the first person a lot of people meet when they come in with their applications and she'll try to get it so we have plans and things like that. Most times it's napkin drawings and pizza boxes and we try to get plans out of them. And as it makes it through them, her, then it makes it to us in a better form. And then we also have a contract planner. He'll review the stuff. They'll send out draft memos and notices. So we've got a planning firm that'll look at this stuff too and help it go through. Christina's your land use secretary. If you guys need something, want something, any of that stuff, just touch base with Christina. Some of the stuff we'll notice as we go through the boardsmanship. As a member comes in and asks Christina to print 50 copies and research this, sometimes we'll kick it back and say, that needs to come from the chair. Run it by the chair, get his permission, her permission, and then we'll move forward on that. Some of the training we'll do. And I'm thinking tonight, we'll go through the zoning, chapter one, chapter two, the basic layout definitions. And we've got four relocations tonight. We had a fifth one just come in the door earlier, but we'll kick that back to the next meeting. So we'll give you guys plenty of training before that particular case subject comes up. So once we go through that, we'll also, you know, we'll hopefully before every meeting, we'll pick away at a couple of chapters. And there's tons of material. You'll have plenty of stuff to look at. I'm sure you'll have dozens of questions. But before we get into a site plan review or a conditional use, we'll make sure we go through those parts of the ordinance and review it. Subdivisions come up. We'll take a look at the subdivision regs. We'll go through that prior to. We've got, I think, three or four major projects that are holding off out there until you guys are all caught up to speed. So we'll work with that through then. You guys drive the direction of the zoning ordinance in town. A lot of you guys may not know what setbacks are, zones are, or things like that. But you guys will be the one to say, a lot of times I'll come to the board and say, this doesn't work. This is silly. This is hard to enforce. It's not enforceable. And you guys will look at it and say, well, that's there for a reason. We want to keep it. Or you'll say, yeah, that's exactly right. Let's get rid of that. Some places in the ordinance, it'll talk about, there was one I highlighted the other day was stormwater leaving a property. If it goes directly into the ocean, then, and a lot of times it'll reference city sewer, city water. So there's a lot of cleaning in the ordinance. And the ordinance is a living, breathing document. It's always changing every year. So, and it's kind of a pendulum. Right now, we have, I would say, one of the most stringent resource protection ordinance is in the whole state itself. And it's a pendulum. It comes back this way and then it's too much reinforcement and come back the other way. So over time, it'll swing back and forth each way. So the board really navigates the way things go and, let's just look at a couple of... So this is the planning board page on the town website. There'll be, the agenda's usually posted up there. We try to get that up there for Thursdays for you guys. We'll have your packets ready and you can come take a look at those. We'll have different projects coming forward. The information will be on the website for you guys as well, too. Our page, the code enforcement side of the page, you can go through and see the status of permitting and things like that. Green's been ready to be picked up. Yellow's sitting on mine, my desk, and the red is waiting for more information. And usually you'll be able to see how the projects are going if you have questions and things on that as well, too. So town website's a great resource. Most of the information we'll be grabbing off the maps online on that there. Has anybody been on boards and committees before here? Everyone is new. Good. Again, thank you guys for joining in. And I think most of you guys have been in touch with the town administrator as far as getting your emails set up and things like that. If you haven't, she'll send you a link and you reply to that and then you'll be up and running. A big thing with the emails is where this is a governmental agency, everything's open for availability. So you don't want to start using your personal emails for stuff because that all becomes public knowledge as well, too. So we'll use the town emails for that. Some things, as we go further with training, we'll have, our contract planner will do some training. We've got a town attorney that'll work with us, some shoreline zoning experts, MMA. And it's little things you may pick up, like when you reply to an email, you reply all and then somebody else replies all and you've got three or four going back replying all, that's an illegal meeting. So it's things like that. We just want to pick up over time and just get you guys, so we're staying on the right side of the line. So in your packet or in front of you tonight, most of you will have a bunch of documents, boards and things like that. Your names are on them, so nobody can steal your stuff. Comprehensive plan, everything goes back to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan has to direct us which way we want to go with stuff. And if you can't sleep at night, break that baby out and you'll be all set. The other one would be the zoning ordinance. That's the one we're going to use quite a bit of. And that's usually the one we're finding conflicts with and will need to change and work with from time to time. Subdivision regs are in there as well, too. We won't get into that. I'll focus on the zoning ordinance tonight. The DEP chapter 1,000, those are the guidelines that the DEP mandates what we have to have in our zoning ordinance for the shoreline zoning. It comes out of the chapter 1,000. They give us a sunset date for when we have to have that stuff adopted. We move it into our ordinance. We send them a copy. They approve it or they kick it back and make us do changes. So the state will watch us on that aspect there, too. There's a checklist for applications and you'll just follow through with that there as we're going through a project. You just check off stuff and we'll have the applicant working on the same one there, too. The MMA manual for boardsmanship for a planning board, just like anything, life expectancies or life experiences dictate how things are. And mostly any policy in there has come from a court case. Somebody's done something, they've been taken to court, there's a decision and maybe it happens again and the court case bounces back to that first one. So everything comes from that. So it's a great guideline to use and there's a reason that it's in there. Something didn't go as proposed. Currently, there's four zoning ordinances that are proposed for town meeting. We were going to have that in June, but due to the COVID, we've kicked it back, September, October, November. Hopefully, we'll be able to have it this fall. So you guys have copies of those as well, too. If not, I've got a couple of copies up here for those, too. And we get time, which is kind of go through those before town meeting so you guys are caught up onto those as well. It referenced timber harvesting was one, docks in the shoreline zone, short-term rentals, storage buildings, and good neighbor policy. So there were five amendments to this year's zoning ordinance. There was a couple others we didn't get to. I know one was, we were trying to focus on some 55 and older housing. Right now, whether you're in the two-acre zone or the three or the five-acre zone, it really makes it hard for somebody to come in and do some affordable housing. As we see this aging population, they don't need two or five acres. And the prior board was really thinking it'd be great to have a development of a bunch of 800 square foot, small, single-level ranches with attached garages or something like that and be able to put it all in one area and maybe on city water, city sewer. I think there was some, a couple of other things we were kicking around, too. But as you guys see things that aren't working or changes you'd like to make, we'll just bring them up, kick them around. A lot of times, we used to have workshops during the day to hash out the zoning changes. And once we get moving, we'll talk to you guys to see if there's a certain day or time if we need to. Or we could just meet more Thursday evenings if that works for you guys. Somebody may be a great guru at spreadsheets and working things up and, you know, we'll track you down through there. So we'll take a look at that zoning ordinance to start with. So one of the first pages in there is the zones on that. And if you go to the town website and pull up the maps, you'll be able to see them much clearer. The dark green is the critical rural. That's five-acre zoning. The lighter, looks more like a gray on this, is the rural zone. Then there's a transition is the brown around the village area. There's a village zone. And as you're going up 109, you've got commercial A, commercial B, commercial C, a couple of different commercial zones as well. The official shoreline zoning map, that's going to outline all the resource protection in shoreline zoning, stream protection in the town. Again, it's much clearer if you're navigating on the town website for that. So my page numbers, I'm page two of 108. Basic requirements, all buildings erected, constructed, altered, enlarged, moved, uses. They're all a conformity with this. They're permitted in all districts, created. So if there was something here before this ordinance, then they're legally existing non-conforming. And as we move forward, that non-conforming is going to keep bringing itself back up is the basic requirements. Nonconformities saying the same thing. If it's a prohibited use and it was existing before this ordinance came into effect, and the first ordinance came in 1974, which was really way ahead of its time compared to a lot of other communities, a lot of didn't get them until the late 80s. So Acton was ahead of its time on that. So if it was existing before, legally existing, then it's allowed to stay as a non-conforming use. And it's allowed to be permitted to stay as that as well. And the definition for nonconformities, same thing. It just fails to meet any of the current requirements. Too close to a side setback front, not enough acreage, not enough road frontage. A lot of the shoreline zoning lots we'll deal with, 50 by 100, that just happens to be the same size we require in campgrounds now. So when you see a place on the lake, on these smaller lakes, the 50 by 100, and they've got a house and a garage and a boathouse and their dock, and they've put it all into 5,000 square feet, now that would be two acres and 250 feet on those lots now. Nonconforming lot, so the first one was just nonconformities. The lot itself would be legally existing and created prior to March 9th of 1974. Nonconforming building or structure, that's just something that doesn't meet the setback. Lot coverage and existed before 1974. Now, the ordinance has changed several times since then. So it depends on which regulation we're looking at would be which ordinance we would be pulling out. So if something was built in 1989, we'd look at the closest ordinance that was in effect at that time to see what the setback should have been. Nonconforming vacant lots. If you have two lots that are in the same ownership, both are in Mr. Smith's name and they're nonconforming, they need to be, by state law, in this ordinance, they would have to be merged together in order to, until you get a full-size lot out of them. Most people are aware of that regulation. So he owns one, she owns one, they own the next one. So if they want to keep them separate, then they've already picked that one up and have worked with that. This is, so a zoning ordinance, if you look at 1.4, 1.4.7, then you go down .1, .2. Sometimes you'll see something and say, aha, well, you've left that, you've got to track back that .1, .2. You track it back to the beginning to make sure you're under the same thing. Because you could see something that's extremely important, but then you track back and it's like, oh, it doesn't even apply to what we're talking about. So that's another thing to keep an eye on with the ordinances themselves. Can vary separately. So nonconforming lots with building, 1.4, .8, .1 is saying, if you've got a lot with two existing structures on it and it's a nonconforming lot, they're allowed by state law to split that lot, even if it's a 50-foot lot. If it's got two houses on it, all they have to do is get two septics that meet state standards, they can split that lot and they just have to keep the lot as conforming as Point two talks about, you're allowed to do repair and maintenance to these nonconforming Division of the nonconforming lots. No division can make the lot, may or may, which violates any of the minimum setbacks. And you can't make the existing condition any worse. And a lot of times, we'll see somebody with a nonconforming lot and they grab some land from their abutting neighbor and try to merge it through and just make it better. It couldn't work the other way. They wouldn't be able to give some of their land for a nonconforming lot to somebody else because it just made their lot more nonconforming. Nonconforming uses, if you've got an existing use prior to, it's legally existing prior to the adoption of the ordinance, then you're allowed to continue it. You can't supersede it with another use without coming through the planning board or expand it. You wouldn't be able to expand it either as well. If they discontinue the use for 12 months, then they would have to come back to the planning board to show cause of why there was discontinued and why they'd have to pick it up. You know, that'd be something like a junkyard in the shoreline zone or something like that. I mean, if you guys saw an issue with it and it's been discontinued. A lot of times, we'll have a gravel pit that they haven't dug out for 10 or 20 years and then all of a sudden, they start back up and pretend like they've been working every day there. So discontinuance, you wouldn't be able to resume that same use. You wouldn't be able to expand a nonconforming use either. If it's a nonconforming use, then you wouldn't be able to expand it without coming through the board for that. And you couldn't create a greater adverse impact on that use. Ordinance quite often will have some redundancies. It'll try to get that message over and over and over. That makes it difficult a lot of times when we go to change it and it's in the ordinance in four or five places and we change it in three or four and we miss one. The more redundancy you have, it's great to have it in multiple places, but then again, it makes it harder to track down. The shoreline zone, we've got 125 miles of shoreline zoning in town, so that's going to be a driving force with a lot of the stuff you guys are doing. So this is an expansion in the shoreline zone or the resource protection. If you've got a nonconforming structure, less than 100 feet away from the water in the shoreline zone, the law went into effect January 1st, 1989. So what was there January 1st, 1989 sets what they can do with that structure. So it's less than 100 feet back. It was created before 1989. They're allowed to expand that structure by 30%. That's floor area and volume. The floor area is not too hard to figure out for the people, length by width. The volume gets a lot more difficult, especially when you've got a lot of doghouse dormers, full shed dormers, triangles up top, down bottom. It gets really, really hard. In the chapter 1,000 we talked about earlier, the DEP has another set of guidelines which has a flat number of how many square feet you can have. They've got away from the volume. And from the water, 0 to 25, no expansion allowed. 25 to 75, I think you can have 850 square feet. 75 to 100 is like 1,000 square feet. And that's all the buildings totaled up. That new proposal in the chapter 1,000, it's been around for five or six years now at least. And we don't see it helping anybody as far as being able to expand. It's much more stringent than this here. Some of the neighboring communities have had it and the builders and the code officers are telling me it really, really limits it. Because there's a height factor to that as well. As you go back, you can be a little taller, but it's really, really not that allowable in these nonconforming structures. So usually, the chapter 1,000 has a sunset clause. They tell us when we have to have that by this latest version. They haven't told us, so we're just leaving this in until either the board sees something different or the state tells us a different avenue to go. The town of Acton is unique that we have resource protection outside of the shoreline zone. The DEP starts their resource protection with, when you have wetlands greater than 10 acres, and that's actual water in the swamp with the ducks swimming around, greater than 10 acres is resource protection. The town of Acton starts with two acres of forested wetland. So you could just have really, really good fertile soil, full of trees, but it's been designated on the map as a hydric soil, then that's resource protection and it has a buffer. And that starts at two acres. So it's much more stringent than the state level is. And that came in 2011, that was adopted in the town. We do allow 30% expansions for existing structures in those areas as well, too. So one of the big things you guys have to deal with, and we have four of them tonight, is when somebody's doing work to these nonconforming structures. And as you drive around the lakes, you can see almost all of them are nonconforming. And quite a few other homes, garages, sheds away from the lakes are also nonconforming. Too close to the road, too close to a side setback. So this reconstruction or replacement, so for a nonconforming structure, which does not meet any of the requirements, and again, mostly it's too close to the water. And they've removed the value by more than 50%. And that could be the house burnt down, a tree fell on it, or they just want to rip it down and put it in a dumpster. And that's a five-year period, we look at that window of when that's been. Has to go through the planning board for greatest practical extent. And at no time will you guys make that more nonconforming. And there's a few reasons that gets triggered and it'll come up as we go down here a little bit more. Floor area volume. So the main practice for the board is to look at the site and the state's thinking, when it's time to do a foundation, you're ripping the house down by more than 50% or you're putting a foundation underneath or outside of it, that's the time to take a look at and say, is there a better place for this structure? And a lot of guys maybe see, oh my God, how'd that house get there? Well, there was a house, they ripped it down, this one's moved back. And a lot of them try to get back to the 100-foot line because once they get past that 100-foot line, they can also expand beyond that 30% once they get outside of that. And vegetation, they have to revegetate the area that was done. So the prior boards always looked at a vegetation plan from a professional be submitted and then get it all revegetated. Historical structures is also under that avenue. We really don't have that many in town. There was a schoolhouse that was going to get moved a few years ago, so they slipped in a couple of things here to give some exemptions for that. The removal of 50% is pretty hard to determine. We usually, if it's even close, we have the people go through the relocation and there's several things the boards will look at for that relocation, too. And each site is totally different than the one you just looked at. Whether it's power lines that you're not moving it back, ledge, vegetation, roads, setbacks, steep slopes, there's going to be totally different. The house next door is going to be totally different than this house here. And eventually, over time, if they all move back a little bit, we go from the places that are 20, 30 feet away from the lake with stormwater runoff going straight into the lake to be in 50, 75, 100 feet with vegetated buffers between the new structure and the water body itself. And the intention is just to get the water clean as before it gets into the water. And one of the things that you guys can consider is occasionally, they'll be reusing the existing foundation. And a lot of times, we'll have them submit and engineers report that the existing foundation's okay. And if the existing foundation is okay, realistically, that's something to consider. So the greatest practical extent is determined by the planning board. They'll have to submit a sewage disposal system so we'll know a new system's going to fit in that. In no case, it's not going to become more nonconforming when you relocate it. And when we're relocating these places where you're looking at the existing site, the existing camp, even though they're going to demo the whole thing and build a multimillion-dollar camp, you're looking at relocating that existing structure. So if it's a 24 by 24 camp, you relocate that existing camp on the site. And if they can build something after you've relocated, then that works out good for them. So you'll take the existing setback from the water, 25 feet, 30 feet, whatever it is, and you'll relocate that existing camp and you'll say, no closer than 76 feet or whatever the number is. That becomes the new building envelope. They go and at that time, they'll be able to build for that. So you're really not concerned, is it a cape, is it a ranch, is it a colonial or anything like that? You're just relocating that existing structure, even though they're going to rip it down and build brand new. And once you guys grant the permit, they've got 18 months to pull the other permits and move forward with that, too. So some of the stuff is vegetation. You require a replanting plan. It's all native vegetation when they'll be bringing that through. We'd be using York County Water and Soil Conservation District to supply the plants, but they're getting very busy, just like anybody else. So as long as it's a plan devised by a professional that shows the stormwater mitigation with the plantings and stuff like that, we've been okay with that in the past. But it's really hard to find somebody that'll design that for you. It's even hard for the contractors to find somebody to plant the stuff. And this is just the quantities of the stuff they'd have to replant, the shrubs and the vegetations. And basically, it has to be native. So change of use of a nonconforming structure, if it's a, again, legally existing nonconforming and they want to change that use, they'd come through the planning board for that. So 1.5, if there's a section in the ordinance that is illegal or this or that, it's just that one section. It's not the whole ordinance is all that's saying there. Conflicts with the ordinance, more restrictive always will be the one to go with. Amendments, so as we change this ordinance, and we've got five coming up next year, they're done at a special town meeting or regular town meeting. And the amendments can be initiated by a majority vote of the planning board, the selectmen or, you know, if an individual talks to one of you guys and gets it going there, or written petition, and that's 10% of the voters at the last gubernatorial election. So usually, the best way for any of it to move forward would be planning. So usually the best way for any of it to move forward would be planning board. Even if somebody was trying to petition or not, would be to talk to you guys, get you guys on board and support that, and move forward that way. That would be the easiest way to go forward with it. So on these new Warren articles, we'd have a public hearing 30 days prior to the meeting, posted 14 days prior, two days in a newspaper. And a lot of this stuff, we're waiting for state law to catch up on this because the newspapers are getting harder and harder to find versus websites and things like that because it's all electronic now. But we've had controversies in the past that the Smart Shop is not a newspaper, so we'll have to put it in the Journal Tribune or one of the Portland papers to classify it as a newspaper, and then we'll put it in the Smart Shop because that's the one everyone reads. If we wanted to get it out there, that's where we'll put it. So we'll double it that time there, too. If we're actually changing zoting districts and things like that, we'd notify everybody individually. When we expanded the resource protection back in 2011, we sent a letter to everybody in town. And as they come in and they're not happy with, now they're in resource protection, nine years later, we can at least say, we sent you a letter, you didn't come, you know, it was several public hearings in that. I think we had one every month just to get the word out there where it was such a major change on that. The map itself gets sent to the DEP, and then they bless it. If we don't hear anything back from the commissioner in 45 days, then the map is is good to go. So we get into the establishments of districts on 2.1. The official shoreline zoning map is part of the ordinance itself. Boundaries are determined. As you read the sections creating the districts and things like that, for those districts, it lays them out, and a lot of times you split zones in half. We try to follow the roads and the rivers and things like that. Any delineation from the map, and this is kind of unique to Acton that has this verbiage here, is for reference only and shouldn't supersede the map. We left that in there because when we went through that, resource protection changed, and there was a lot of people that felt they didn't have resource protection on their property. We left that in there so they could bring in some documentation and we could navigate around the maps. There's two court cases that says the maps have to be the maps. You can't have the code officer one day saying you're you're not in resource protection, you buy the property, and then the next day, either he changes his mind or you got a new code officer and he says you're in. And I think the court case was out of China. They were in, he bought it, then he was out, then he was in and back out, and the judge said that just does not make any sense. The map has to be much more bearing on that. So that's something the board may look at over time. Oh, you got to answer that on speakerphone. Resource protection in the shoreline zone, it's a little confusing because we got RP inside the shoreline zone, RP outside of the shoreline zone. But this is just really showing where it is. We also have Little Oscepee District, which is up on Bolch Lake side, which is Saco River Carter Commission. And they have a whole bunch of other rules, and we try to have ours similar to theirs just so we don't have a conflict. Ours was 700 feet away from the the river in Bolch Lake itself. We were at 750, they were 500. We went back down to 500 just so we didn't have two different contradictions. Because they'd be in it, we'd send it up to them, they'd be like, why are you here? The commissioner, oh, June 10th, 2008 is when we changed our official zoning map, and then we updated it with the resource protection in the shoreline zone in 2011. Section 2.5 talks about being able to, if you've got, and we have a lot of lots that are half-critical rural, half-rural, you're allowed to expand the less restrictive into the other lot by 50 feet. And it gets pretty confusing sometimes as far as what the setbacks are, how many acres do they need? I'm in the rural, but I got critical rural out back. So over time, hopefully, the board will take a look at those zones and those lots. Before 2011, we had resource protection, shoreline zoning, and general purpose. We had three zones. It was pretty simple back then. Now I think we've got the 11 zones. And each zone will allow something different or prohibit basically everything else. If it's not an allowed use, then it's prohibited. 2.6 talks general lot standards. And again, a lot of this stuff, you'll be like, oh, we'll never touch this, but yet you guys are the ones that will be the ones to change any of this stuff that seems like, why is it here? And it doesn't make any sense for Acton. So general lot standards. Maximum building height, 35 feet tall, and that's measured average meander in height on that. The new lot needs to meet the minimum roads frontage for the district that it's in, and it just needs to meet a level A, B, or C road. A lot of times, this will come up when somebody's either splitting a lot on Hebo-Hibo or one of these decommissioned roads or something like that. It's tough enough to restrict regular building, but if you were to actually try to develop more lots out there, then at that time, you've got to bring the road up to some sort of a standard. Minimum lot standards, the land below high water line or underneath a road would not count towards lot size itself. So if you've got a two-acre lot, you have to have the area below, the swamp wouldn't count, the area under the road wouldn't count. So it's a clear two-acre or five-acre, depending on what zone you're in. A lot operate on the opposite side of the road is two separate lots unless it was created after 1974. A lot of times you'll see on the tax map, the road cuts the lot right in half. In reality, that person has two separate lots if that was created before '71. And it's crazy when you see some of these dates that the state comes up with, September 22nd, 1971, and you wondered just who had the road and needed the two lots and got it through at the state level. Minimum width of any portion of any lot within 100 feet horizontal of the high water line, you have to keep that lot the same width going all the way back. So if you've got 250 on the water, you're going back at least that far for the 100 feet. That way there, you don't get these crazy spaghetti lots on the shoreline zone and thing. They'll have their lots, and then they'll shrink right down or do something crazy. Somewhere is in here, it says odd lot, odd lot, odd-shaped lots are prohibited, and I don't think I've ever seen a square lot, so I'd call the square lot odd-shaped, but they're just trying to prevent the spaghetti lots, long than narrow ones. Every dwelling unit needs to be, meet the requirements for the lot. And we'll have people trying to get two houses on one lot, and we looked at it about 15, 18 years ago. We put some regulations in there to try to help with multiple dwelling units. And then last year, we brought in the ADU, accessory dwelling units, because we were starting to see whether the kids wanted to come back to live with the parents, or the parents were moving in the kids, or the elderly people needed some caregivers. And we were looking at the zoning was too restrictive. If you had three-acre lots, you'd have to have six acres and 500 feet of frontage to try to do basically a duplex. But we ended up putting the ADU units in there, and that will allow it without very much additional restrictions. When we get into the ADU section, we'll be able to see that there. And when we see society changing or whatever, we try to keep our zoning ordinance up to that, to either help the people or try to prohibit. I mean, marijuana is the big thing now. We're seeing a lot of that. We've got a lot of caregivers coming in all the time, and they were going to have a storefront for caregivers, and it's like, no, that sounds like it's a storefront. So the regulations, you want to stay ahead of microbreweries, nanobreweries were a big thing a few years ago, too. And the board just has to look, do we allow, do we bring it in? Manufactured housing parks. And a lot of times, it's great just to pull up Wells Ordinance, York, just different towns, and just see what other people are doing, too, because we're not the only ones out there. That's page 12 of 108. So as you come down to the land use chart, these are all our villages, our districts going across horizontally here. The aquifer protection district really isn't a zone, but it identifies where the aquifer protection is, and you kind of just keep that out. Again, somebody bringing in automotive repair facility, it's an allowed use in that zone, but it also does have an overlying district of aquifer protection. You just want to maybe look at that a little bit more stringent. So as you go down on the left side, that'll be the uses that are allowed, and then you slide across, it's a permitted use, it's a conditional use, it's not allowed, it's site plan review. See campgrounds, we just did a campground recently in town. I think that was 56 units. And that was in rural, so you come down rural, campground, site plan review. They went through the process with that, got it approved, they're up and running now. And tough season to try to start with the changes we're all going through, but it seems like they're doing very well up there. Residential uses, single family, there's our ADUs in there that we're allowing them in all districts except for shoreline zone, resource protection, and Little Oscepee. We didn't want to try to fight with the DEP on that. It is allowed as a multifamily, I think. No, multifamily's not allowed in there either. Two families would be, but not an RP. So a couple of different ways they can look at it navigating through there. Manufactured home, home occupations, that's another thing the board looked at last year. We were looking at contractor yards. We were kind of getting a few complaints on some junky yards, basically. And we need contractors in town. They don't meet the definition of home occupation. Home occupation's when you drive by and you see a sign out front. They do travel agencies, they do knitting, they're computer repair. You drive by a home occupation, and it's just a little business in there. So we were looking at contractor yards. We found a few different ordinances we wanted to steal from other towns. So that's something the board, as we move forward, may be taking a look at, too, as well. Commercial, we're starting to see more commercial. As you see on 109 down by the fire department, there is a animal rescue league facility that has, I think the building's 40 by 80, that'll be a dog rescue facility. And then they're building six adoption centers out back. The dogs will live in these six houses. No people, just just dogs living in the houses, and they're quite nice-looking houses. And then in the last minute, they added a, I think it's an 18-hole mini golf course, too. And I just didn't see the two blending, although they have ice cream in between dog rescue and mini golf. They just think it's an attraction, too. And it's kind of, you notice that in a lot of towns when all of a sudden that Walmart goes into that one side of town and development connects right out to it. You'll start to see that with Springville coming towards us as that starts getting developed more and more. It's hard for the commercial uses to come into town because really, after Labor Day, a lot of the people spending money leave. But so it's water-based industries. We've got the whole Nine Yards Dock facility going in across from the fairgrounds as well. A couple of wedding facilities went into as well, one on Hopper Road, one on Milton Mills Road recently. And we just did a 4.5-megawatt solar farm as well, and I think we've got another one coming in that's going to be a little bigger than that, too. So as you go down the side, you'll see kennels and things like that, professional businesses. The last board we talked about, really expanding this because it doesn't have drug stores. There's a lot of things that we'd love to add on to this, and a lot of catchalls we have similar to a conditional use. And we try to open the door with that as much as we can, but we'll see how that is. So we had talked about how do we expand this? And maybe it's a survey out to the people, and now between the internet, social media, things like that, it's just getting the public input and what does the public want to see the town as? Do they just want to see it a bedroom community, sleepy little community? After 9/11, we saw a huge increase in seasonal conversions, people moving up to their summer camps. They were going to move up anyways, but they jumped it up ahead. The same thing now with COVID, we're seeing that same influence. We're getting a ton of calls on people that want to get out of the city. They don't need to be there, they're working remote. Before, they were grabbing the train in Wells and going down and riding it out. But now, now they want to get out of the city because they can work at remote. The grandparents are still in the camp, or the parents are still in the camp, so they can't move into the camp. And they actually want five or 10 acres to have pigs and chickens and live remotely, and they're just looking for a fast internet speed for working. So we're seeing that dynamic change as well. When we were looking at growth ordinances back, must have been around 2000, we've got a growth ordinance where we only allow 35 new homes in town. And that was a great circuit breaker in, I think, 05, 06. People were camped out here for a week or two in advance to try to get permits to get in to be able to build, and it's a regulatory device that really can help the town prepare. If all of a sudden we're doing 120, 130 permits a year and we were used to 20, all of a sudden, now we need full-time fire, we need 24K at the fire department, we need to do three additions on the school each year and this and that. That growth ordinance really gives the town time to keep an eye. Two years ago, we hit the cap. Last year, I think, was pretty close. This year, we're going to be close, even with the three months of COVID where we were kind of quieter than normal. I think this year, we'll see that inflection also as well. So filling grading, earthwork, things like that. We've got a ton of gravel pits that we've done permitting for in town, and a lot of that's hours of operations, keeping the butters so they're okay with their new neighbor or an existing neighbor. They've got essential services, that's where our solar came from. And it's, a lot of times when you're making these regulations, you have one idea in mind, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes with a solar panel that's on a pole that tracks the sun, and they're putting it on their lakefront, and they just blocked everybody behind them that used to be able to see the lake. So some of that stuff will come through as conditional use, and you guys will look at it and say, that seems reasonable, or no, it doesn't. Footnotes are keys to this. So when you're looking through and say, oh, that's an allowed use, it's got a three next to it, whatever. But you got to watch for the footnotes. The footnotes are going to be a lot more information followed up on that, and they'll just back through with that for you. And it'll either explain a little bit more, or it'll make it clearer, or confuse you right along through. Article three, article three gets into definitions. It always comes back to definitions. If there's something we're tripping up on, look at the definition. If there's not a definition in our section, then we break out the dictionary, Google it and see what goes from there. I know I've been in training before with code officers, and we won't even get out of the definition sections because by nature, they just like to argue. Automotive repair, garages, graveyard, basil area, all this stuff will pop its head up sooner or later, and that's two things to remember is footnotes and definitions. You'll just want to pick it up. Cluster subdivision, that's something the board's always pushed for probably 30 years. Cluster subdivision would be somebody has 50 acres of land, and they put all the houses into five or 10 acres, so we reduce them from two-acre lots to an acre lot or something. The developer now puts in a street that's a third of the size of what it would have been. Everybody's living in one area. The last one we did was plant development did it on Nason Road. It's a little short road in there, maybe it's 1,000 feet long, probably 10, 12 houses in there. They're all in that one area. And then the 40 acres or so, I think it's 40, 50 acres, all gets saved for conservation land out behind there. So it protects large tracts of areas, that keeps the deer and the animal with a place to stay. Because as we do this five-acre zoning, and we keep breaking off these five-acre chunks in, and I start putting in my house, my garage, my lawn, the septic, this and that, we just keep taking and taking and taking from the natural areas. And now, and the deer are very good at adapting because they'll eat whatever I plant out there for them. But as we go to the cluster, we're able to save more and more large tracts of areas, and over time, if we can connect the large tracts, it just keeps it more and more for everybody, all the animals out there. Apparently, there wasn't much in definitions I wanted to go over too, too deep with you But as you guys take the But as you guys take the books, I left your highlighters too, take them home, the yards, start looking at the zoning ordinance, and we'll start picking it apart. And as you got questions that, "Hey, this doesn't make any sense, what are they thinking?" And be like, "Yeah, yeah, I remember that one." A lot of the setbacks, it'll talk whether it's a front setback, rear setback, front gets kind of controversial to whether you're talking about the lakeside or the streetside for the waterfront stuff, side setbacks, rear setbacks. Section 4 gets into that, and that, I think, as far as I was going to go, so I don't talk aimlessly for too long with you guys, and we'll get into some of the relocations. If you guys want to take a five-minute break, use the bathroom and stuff, or... I was kind of waiting for Gavin, but if Gavin isn't, if he's going to run a little late, and I'd hate to do the, if you guys just want to go around, we'll start with John, introduce yourself and...
John Quan, we're building East Shore Drive over in Leontown.
Gavin, I got you set right at that table.
Right here.
Yeah.
Gavin Maloney.
Gavin is our interim vice chair.
Still interim.
That's what we left it at last, we'll wait for the next elections, you can't ditch it.
That's this month, isn't it?
Loon Point, Loon Point, Loon Point. Cool, we'll just take five minutes, and you guys stretch your legs a little bit and use the bathroom, and then we'll get into some relocations.
Mainly these people over there. They weren't familiar with a lot of the other things.
Great.
I talked with Nancy already, so...
Good luck to both of you.
They're on the back, Ed's in charge of them. I was skeptical, I didn't know if we were supposed to hand out paper. So, the relocations, non-conforming structure, doesn't meet the setbacks for one reason or another, too close to the road, too close to the side, too close to the water. A lot of times, as the person will come in and it goes through our office, we'll get it, we'll discuss with the property owner and get it, in my opinion, as far back as practical. If we can get it outside so it becomes a conforming structure, we get it back behind the 100-foot zone, you guys never get to see it. I couldn't tell if I was getting hand signals. You guys won't, if we can make it a conforming structure, you guys will never deal with it. So if it's, we've got the non-conforming structure, a lot of times, I'll try to get it so it's conforming, if me and the applicant agree, I'll tell them not to come to the first meeting tonight, because worst-case scenario, you guys will say, "Huh, we can't make a decision, we'll do a site walk," and then I'll have the applicant, we'll go out, do the site walk, and the applicant will be at the next meeting that we can get him on the agenda. So, you'll do everything from dog houses to million-dollar camps that people are ripping down, and we've got four tonight. So, the first one, Mr. Rude, and he is at 15 Cardinal Drive here in Acton. This is the non-conforming structure, it's a four-by-six shed, it's over 100 feet away from the water. The existing shed's 124 feet away from the water, nine feet from the side setbacks, there's a little tiny road here that it comes into, it's all you can do to fit a vehicle in to get into this. The proposal is to move it 11 feet off the side and maintain 35 feet from the edge of the right of way. So, and I've got this upside down, but that would be the lake there, that's the existing camp, and this is a four-by-six shed. They came in with the application, something I probably wouldn't have even seen driving by, but they just wanted to do it right to relocate that shed. So, as we relocate it, if the board seems that seems reasonable, somebody would make a motion, somebody would second, we'd discuss it, vote on it, or the board would say, "I think this is something we want to go take a look at." Thought I had a second one in there too. The relocation is these green little areas right here is where he was moving it to, these green ribbons too right there, so really, he's just getting it off this side setback by rotating it and putting it right there. Do one of the old members want to start the bidding process? Gavin?
So, it's not going to be moved within 100 feet or anything?
He's 124 feet away from the water now, and he'd be sliding back a little bit from it. The non-conformity would be off of the roads up here a little bit, the non-conformity would be the side setback. And he'd be okay on the side, but he's just in on the road.
Sounds pretty straightforward, really.
Yeah, it is. Again, I don't think I'd even noticed if he did it without a permit. It's pretty heavily vegetated, for some reason, the Google Earth isn't coming up here, the internet's slower up here than normal. It's pretty heavily vegetated, this is the waterfront here, the camp's about 20 feet back, and then it's heavily hemlocked all the way back up to it. We got a shot from the water too. Wilson's odd for some reason, there's a huge hummock on a lot of the lake there from over the time that, it's almost four feet tall, and it's naturally, it's been there forever too, so...
Sheriff, unless Ken sees anything else that we should...
If...
In the water, we should look at.
No, on this one here, not really. If me and the property owner don't agree, if I say, "Jeez, you can move that thing back 70 feet and get, you know, 80 feet away from the water," and they disagree, the property owner will come in with the application, talk to you guys, present the case, we'll do the site walk, and then you guys can make a decision. If they disagree where I think it would be, where the board would relocate it.
Yeah, so this issue is the setback to the road? I mean, is no issue to the water?
No, no issue to the water, he's cleaned up on that, and the road is, I wish my Google Earth would come, I think it's my internet connection why I can't get my Google Earth to come up. When I go in there, I back in from out here because it's all you can do to get in through all the trees and stuff. If you're pouring some kind of a foundation or something, I'd be looking for a certified plot plan so we know where everything is exactly, because someday, somebody's going to sell this, and all of a sudden, it comes back that it's still too close to the side setback or the road or something like that. This is showing the road actually stops here, so, where it's just a shed and it's four-by-six, if there come a time when they go to sell it and it is two feet, they can hook a chain around it and drag it right out of the way or get it right off the site. So usually, on these tiny accessory buildings without a foundation, I'm not as concerned with certified plot plans and stuff, otherwise, when you guys tell somebody no closer than 75 feet from the water, we'll get a plot plan from a surveyor showing that the new foundation is that, and that'll also include eaves and overhangs, so we'll look for a couple of extra feet there.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, that's an easy one, I started easy, they'll get more complicated as we go.
So you want a motion to approve, is that there again?
Yeah, as submitted. Motion to approve the application as submitted.
I'm making motion to approve the application as submitted. At 15 Tidham Road, map 141 block 006, we relocate 146.
I'll second it.
Gavin, I'll let you run the meeting as far as vice chair, just as far as trying to get any discussion on that and then a vote.
Okay. Yeah, any further discussion from members of board? All right, I guess we'll take a short dance then. All in favor?
Passes.
Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right.
So, with a full board here, normally at the beginning of the meeting, we'll delegate the alternates that are voting, with a full board, then the alternates won't have to vote tonight, but quite often, out of seven, there's one or two that's missing, so you'll always have something up on that. Let's see, what's my next one? Kittredge, I'll grab that one next. So this one, I think I gave you a paper copy in your blue folder, so you get the blue Usually, I can get the Google Earth to overlay on this, I'll have to figure out why, why that's not working. So with this particular place, they're looking at relocating the existing camp and the garage. Come on. Getting impatient with the slow internet, and then I lose it and it comes back.
Well, we're getting almost 20...
So he's got...
Thirty feet, thirty feet on both.
Exactly, yeah. Currently, he's 29-2, the existing house and the existing garage, 39-9. Again, your job is to relocate the two existing ones. He's got an existing septic system back there and a tank, he's willing to relocate this tank and get it out of the way. Originally, he was probably 20 feet closer because they didn't want to move the tank. And at the end of the day, when you've got 20, 30 feet away from the lake, and a lot of places are much smaller than that, you really don't have much frontage to entertain out there. We're looking at stormwater mitigation usually is what we're trying to pull them back too, and the state of Maine's just looking for the aesthetics of it, they want it to look more natural as well too. So by moving them back, we're getting this natural buffer reestablished in the front and moving it back a little bit better. The septic was a reason he didn't have to relocate it, but he wanted to get it back a little further, and he'll end up building, demoing both of these and building one place altogether, but he's looking for the board to reestablish the new setback number. Looks like over here was 69 feet and over here was 58, so, almost 30 feet in expansion on those there. Let's see...
Are there two buildings being attacked?
I believe so, yeah. That's currently the house looking at it from the road, and this is the garage over here.
Yeah, it's lapsed.
That's looking at it from the shore front, looking back, that's the garage, that's the house. That's the garage on that side. I think he's 23% vegetated now, and he's looking at getting it down to 20. So it'll come back into this area here. So there's a lot of reasons why you wouldn't relocate areas on it. This is looking across the street, you can't tell but Westshore Drive is right there as well.
Is that the stepping retaining wall?
Yeah, that was this one over here. So, underground utilities go across through here, they're within the setback from the road to that, so that's not a factor on this one here. These retaining walls in this area here, so this is the 50-foot setback from the road, these are the 10-foot side setbacks, and this is the 100-foot setback here. Where we're talking pouring concretes and things like that, he's got a surveyor to do the site plan to start with because he's going to need a surveyor to also document that it's in the area that the planning board has deemed the new location. So on this one here, he's got an existing state septic system, he's willing to move the tank, and he's got all these retaining walls back here as well too. This paved driveway comes in, goes down, way down into this area, this whole area is paved now, by moving this back, that's going to be reducing the paving, going from well above the 20% lot coverage down to below the 20%.
How old is that system?
96, I think, 97. So the ordinance state law just says it just needs to be a state-approved system, which will go back to 1974. A lot of times, when somebody will come in and we'll talk about their system, it'll be, "Well, now's the time to upgrade it, it's, you know, 40, 50 years old as you get that far back." But, it's great coarse gravelly soil out there, so it's not unusual to get 40 years out of them.
Think we'll ask them to have anyone helping with the revegetation of the buildings where the existing buildings are now?
We've had great luck and we've used him as a consultant for the town in the past with Morris Environmental. He used to work for the DEP. It's hard to say you've got to use a individual, but a professional by means obviously is, is a great way to go. York County Water and Soil is, they're just so overwhelmed with the projects they've got going now, but if we use the standard York County Water or equivalent professional, a lot of the landscapers, more of a hardscapers. There's a few nurseries around. Salmon Falls is doing the one right up next door here and it wouldn't surprise me. And that was a project we did a relocation on last year, but I think they said it was teetering around $40,000 for the revegetation that they're doing on that site.
And wouldn't that fall under the same thing is you have to be licensed to do the work from the shoreline zone?
The contractor for installing needs to be DEP certified for erosion control.
So it would be anybody that's licensed to do that, no?
It's two levels. One person designs the plan and the other person does the installation. And it's really hard to find a good person that is available, readily available enough for the contract to do the design. It's another whole thing, finding somebody that understands the planting and, and has knowledge, because when you talk about the cost of all that nursery stock, if you don't know what you're doing and our ordinance says that the survivability rate is 80% over five years, if you don't get that and you have to replant it again, then that, it's very expensive to do.
Those dimensions on the proposed location, is that the closest dimension to the?
Yep, so that would be eaves, overhangs, and that's another thing. I would sit and I'd look at this dimension or that dimension or whatever. The surveyors have, have gone around and found the closest point. And sometimes the closest point's on your neighbor's lot or across the street or something like that. The average homeowners just want to go straight out to the lake and say, hey, I'm 58 feet. That's why we asked for the certified plot plan. They'll go from that closest point. And again, the foundation would still be another couple of feet behind that.
Are they doing the 30% expansion also?
Yes, if they get into this area here.
Because the buildings look the same size?
Exactly, because your job is to relocate the existing building. And so what you'll actually do is change this. This is the 100-foot setback here. You'll be changing that 100-foot setback to 58 on the house and 66 for the garage, or just keeping it at 60 feet or something like that, a happy medium in between.
30%, they can't go any closer yet?
Correct. You'll establish the new, all you're changing really is this 100-foot setback to the new number you guys come up with.
Can you look at, see if they've done expansions?
Correct. We'll look at, well, that's kind of why the patio has an X on it. That was done without permitting. This guy just bought it. So first thing we do is pull the assessing card from 1989 and we look at it, what was in 89, what's been done from 89 to current. And if, a lot of times we'll get a call from a realtor, hey, has the 30% been done on this building? We'll pull the file out and say, no, not according to our records, but without being there and looking at the card, we have no idea what it looks like. There could be a garage addition, the patio's a fairly common deck, second floors, and if it was done without permitting, luckily we have great records from the late 80s, early 90s, so we can document what was there. We've got a photo, we've got a basic site plan. And we noticed this house was replaced 91, 92 or something like that, and the permit just said replace house, and we're on the assumption that there was a camp there to demo and replace, because they were able to get a permit for it. And a lot of times we look at the permits and it's like, I don't know how you got one or why they issued it, but you got one, so that gets you into at least a stopple area.
So we're looking at the, the new minimum distance from the normal high watermark, not the expansion, that you're going to give the 30?
Correct. Yep.
They didn't trigger the best possible location in the road 90s from the complete building?
I think the law went into effect in 89. I don't think towns took it seriously, the 30% of the relocation until mid 90s. I think they thought it was so confusing and it was going to go away, because the stuff I look at, really until mid 90s was when people started documenting the expansions and, and relocations. Where we're doing two separate structures with two separate numbers, I think I'd just average it or just come up with 60 feet or something that seemed reasonable to me. He's maintaining 20 feet on the septic here, but that's a bump out there. I, I think he could get 60 fairly easily.
Oh, is that good?
Yeah, I guess we're looking for a motion with the distance from the water and then we'll probably put a couple of small conditions on that.
Couple of what issues?
Conditions.
We'll put a couple of conditions on the, on the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application of James Kittredge, 634 Westshore Drive, map 125, block 25, do tear down existing camp and garage, rebuild and rebuild, then we're on to 30% allowed expansion, no precedent, 60 feet from the high water. Little conditions for revegetation planned by your kind of soil and water for somebody's subsequent or quality.
Yeah, and I'd also put in the condition that they make sure they're in perfect service. Percentage is down to that 20%.
Yep, he's at 24 now. He said he'd get it down to the 20. By moving it back, we're getting rid of a lot of the pavement and this patio thing disappears too.
Yeah. I guess we're looking for, if I'm running the motion, running the meeting, I'm supposed to second anything, so I guess we're looking for a second.
My question is, I'm going to second it, but it was mentioned of 30% expansion, so what if he's already moved a portion of that?
He didn't. They rebuilt on the same size on it, but when we go through permitting, then we'll take care of the 30%. We would still, even if you approved it, when we went through permitting, if he couldn't, he'd already used it, he'd already used it. So, did you second, or did you second?
I was going to second, but I have a question about that.
You can second, then we can discuss it.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so if the 30%, and I think when we looked at this, it wasn't used. It was kind of complicated to track it down through. And that's what's kind of nice about the new laws. It would really restrict, we don't have to look at the 30%, we'd have a flat number rate on it, but he'd have existing conditions here and we'd work with the existing conditions, providing they were legally existing. Again, the 30%, it's a tough law because somebody with a small lot with a big house gets a big addition versus somebody with a big lot and a small house gets a small addition.
I was just, you know, in case they used already 10% of it, leave another 30, another 10%.
Yep, so we would go back to the 1989 records and we try not to look at what was there. We look at the 89 and then he'd get that plus 30%. As he moves back to here, any of his expansion is probably going to be back into this area here. Once he's out of the 100, then it wouldn't count. I think when, when he was talking originally, he's trying to get as much as he can away from this, because he wants to have the front yard on the, on the lakeside vegetated, move it back to the street, but yet far enough away from the street, because this is at the beginning of Westshore Drive, which is pretty busy, similar to the beginning of Eastshore Drive, but when you're right close to that lake, to the road, you're right on that traffic. So this is at least he's got some depth to the lot.
The reason why I made the 30% part of the motion, because Dennis said there was no record of expansion when he got the permit. And so saying that, I did it just to make sure that it's very clear, you know, this is the reason to do it. That was my deal.
And we're getting rid of the patio.
We're getting rid of the patio and we're getting rid of the driveways, the big thing. And then have him do a, when he does a stormwater mitigation, his revegetation plan, that's going to clean up a lot of it, too. We used to be concerned on which side the eaves were draining water and all types of that, but with the stormwater mitigation, most of them are doing a drip line trench system, just a bunch of crushed stone and mitigating the stormwater as it comes down the driveway and getting it in the ground as much as possible. Otherwise, as that stormwater runs across that pavement, it heats up hotter and hotter and hotter, and when it dumps into the lake, it's a much hotter water and that's going to accelerate your algae blooms. And then at that point, become a water quality issue.
All right, well, we have a second, so let's just, any other comments or questions we've proposed? All in favor of Dennis' motion, no closer than 60 feet from the high watermark? All in favor of his view?
With the conditions?
With his condition, yep. So when Christina, that all passed. When Christina will do the minutes, a lot of times at the next meeting, somebody will say, hey, I didn't say that. It is exactly what you said, because she's going to get it off the videotape and bring it back. And a lot of time, it's not what I meant, though. So meaning and saying, and we'll try to clarify that as we go through.
Close, we got, everybody's in favor. I don't see any, anyone opposed or anyone opposed.
And so we went from a little tiny shed to a, that was a higher-end project. So in totally different standards. Each one's going to be totally more different than the one before. This one here, Brian Long, down 197 Flat Ground Road, it was, that was it. He had a manufactured home in there. 14 by 66.
So they're going to roll their outbuildings into the size of their existing mobile home?
Only, and, and he's going to get rid of the outbuildings anyways, but, let me bring that down in.
Now, is the mobile home going to be the same size?
He's going to try to leave that in. Now, what's unique with this one is the resource protection that is around this one is. It's not a waterfront. This is a forested wetland vegetation and. So it's poor soils, probably about an eight-acre area of poor soils, has a 200-foot buffer around it. The green is the forested resource protection area and then there's a 200-foot buffer around it. He built this before the zoning changed in 2011 and, I wish my Google Earth was working. He is off the Salmon Falls River, but he is 1,300 feet away from the river. So it's unique, this little small forested wetlands there. So it came in in 2011. So this is a town restriction, not a state RP. This is a town, town RP zone.
It's not in the shoreline zone?
It is in resource protection outside of the shoreline zone, yeah. So normally, when you do the relocation process, when you do your 30%, you, the foundation underneath it doesn't pertain to you. You get that for free. So you kind of double the size of the camp. If you're jacking it up, put it in under. With the manufactured home on a slab, he's not looking for a foundation underneath it, but the ordinance doesn't give him that square footage and allow it. He wants to get rid of the single wide and do a double wide. That's why he's bringing the sheds into it and there's three or four sheds that go in there with it. So Salmon Falls is one of our main areas. We like to keep the, the water quality clean in. There's probably 80,000 people that drink the water downstream as you get into the Berwick, Somersworth, Rochester, as it goes down through there. So as it leaves Great East, goes into Horns, goes into Salmon Falls and through the astromary thing, it's an area we like to keep clean as well, too. So the protection's good around it, but this is just an isolated pocket of the, the maps were delineated through the wetlands from USFW, National Wetland Inventory Mapping, when they, when they picked up all these wetlands. So when we were doing these maps, a lot of people would say there are no wetlands out behind there. And these people had said the same thing back then, the wetlands weren't there, but it was mapped as National Wetland Mapping. So over time, we, we'll, we'll have to look at our maps a little bit better there. I wish my Google Earth would come up because that clearly shows it's all forested area.
Can you, can you point to the approximate location of the septic?
Is right behind the unit. So, and.
Right, right on edge of the buffer and the resource.
Yep, yep. So septic's right there, the well's right there, the underground utilities come up and go up through the slab.
And it's a concrete slab that's on the.
Correct. So I guess the motion would be in the existing location, no closer to the resource than the existing slab. Which without having a wetland delineate go out and mark this area here, he had just marked from the back of the property line.
Mr. Larry Gavin, I just want to make it known that I'm not saying anything, because it is my son's.
How is the lot generally, pretty good?
Flat, heavily vegetated in the front, lawn area in here, and then heavy pines from here. He had a horse barn here, another shed here and another shed over here. I think standing on the slab, that horse barn was maybe 50, 55 feet back there and you could barely see it.
But that's going to stay or?
No, he's going to get rid of all the buildings and put it in so he could add to the, to get his, to go with a double wide. It won't be as long, he's going to cut the end off, but he's just trying to establish this line right here.
Yeah.
So road setback's good, side setbacks are good. It's just this RP that came in after he built that house.
But his law wouldn't allow us to bring him outside the buffer anyway?
No, no. And again, foundation is one of the things you can look at and the utilities and all that. Septic's tied in, water's tied in, electrical, underground electrical comes up in through the slab as well, too. I would say where we, we didn't have a wetland delineator delineate this to come up, he's saying he's 251 from the rear property line. If you were going to make a motion to approve it, the existing location, no closer than 250 feet from the back. 250 feet from the back property line.
And the existing slab's in good condition?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we know when it was put in?
Um, I'd have to get, I wrote the permits for that, so, it was '06-ish, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah.
He had to camp out?
He had to camp out.
And then they rented the town hall out to the people, so they could sleep in here, New Year's Eve. I came in, they were all sleeping on my floor in my office downstairs. They're a little hard to wake up the day after New Year's.
People should have their phones up.
I'm just excited when everybody can have their permits on the first, beginning of the year. After that, it's not as bad.
Well, it's pretty straightforward to me, and obviously, unless we're going to have to move this foundation, we can't get it outside the parking district anyway.
And I think we've always looked at it, are we talking 20 feet away from the lake, or are we talking where 80 feet from the lake? And you kind of look at things a little differently. When somebody's 20 feet from the lake, you're looking much more stringently than somebody that's already 80 feet. From the actual resource, he's 1,300 feet of heavily vegetated area.
From the river?
Yeah.
So, we're talking about 250 feet, and it's not going to increase, it's not going to get any closer?
Correct. That existing slab will be no closer than 250 feet from the rear property line.
Disposal field and all that?
All stays.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that 200, when you use that tool, it didn't get to 250, but it will?
I'm going with his setbacks.
If I can, if I can-
Jump in?
The mobile home itself is, I think, 210 or 30 feet, or something like that, from the Flat Ground Road.
235.
And that's 500 foot block. And so, if you take 14 and say an hour, we'll bring that up to roughly 250, and that'll reach 350, that's what we'll-
And-
So, the slab's going to stay there, or you're just going to expand it to?
On the, away from the resource, they're going to expand it and put a double wide And I, so, they'll use that slab and not rip it out, so maybe it would be safer to say 240 from that back. Because at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter, because they're going to build off of that slab. It would just be, when the mortgage company comes in, first thing they do is they'll run out and do a mortgage survey. If they trip and see, he's 249, we said 250, because we'll have that documentation, I reckon. So, that's a good point.
So, the new mobile home's going to be 30% expansion?
And we're going to move all the horse barns and the other couple of sheds into the same thing. He'll get rid of all the outbuildings and add it into the new unit. So, that would be to demo one manufactured home and three accessory buildings. Demo one, manufactured home, and three accessories.
Is that the approval?
That would be, yeah.
All right, well, I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Brian Lees along 131 Flat Ground Road, to demo one manufactured home and three accessory buildings, and have a new one installed with 30% expansion, no closer than 240 feet from the rear property line?
So, now, somebody just needs to second that.
I'll second it.
Awesome, thank you. Any discussion? Everybody's good on that one?
Maybe we can just put a condition that it's no closer, no closer than the existing-
Existing slab.
Yeah, because we have that midway.
Exactly.
And he's, no closer, but the series is good.
Christina's already got it written down.
Should the words best practical, except best practical location application be put in there, or?
Christina will usually have that into the minute. She'll have the standard revegetation plans and things like that into most of it. This one here really wouldn't need a vegetation plan, because it was pretty heavily vegetated, but we'll work with the property owners on that, too.
All right, we're looking for show of hands, all in favor. So, we got four in favor, and then-
One abstaining.
Abstaining.
Yep.
So, should he, does he need an offer?
I wouldn't think so. You've got a majority vote of the board, so.
We wouldn't change that. Okay, so, four, four, 4-0-1? Four in favor, zero vote, and my reason for abstaining will be requested in minutes.
Boy, I wish I had my Google Earth on this. So, this is 10 Clifton Dale, and the property currently, approximately 30 feet from the water. They're looking to demo and rebuild. There's a huge little hammock that it sits on. These are 20-foot contours, so they don't show up as much. I don't know if I ended up printing these for you, but, um... So, this is the existing house here, and they found a little flat spot of land. And you can see, these are two-foot contours here, so it's fairly steep going up, fairly steep going down. This is the building setback area. This is the 100-foot line here. The road setbacks are here. This is the utility lines here. So, our job would be to relocate this existing camp, steep slopes and stuff, so you could easily say, "Right there is the spot." So, this is the existing, this could be a proposed location. With the utility lines there, in the past, the boards never put them behind utility lines and things like that. Becomes steeper grades through here. I think this is, kind of a driveway comes in and turns here. They don't want to relocate. They want to keep it right where it is. I suggested that, I thought it could move back a little bit here with these two-foot contours, 2, 4, 6, 8, you're about 10 feet down there. Again, if you relocated in kind of a reverse walkout, you'd have the walkout on this side here, and they would end up with this flat area to have in front of the new proposed place. So, when they rebuild the place, it's not going to look like this. It's probably going to be more squared off or something like that. And again, if you get into outside the 100 feet, then you could expand beyond the 30%.
Any other structures on the property?
I don't believe so. So, we got here.
Is there a neighbor that you see up by the water?
Oh, they do have another camp down on there, I think.
It's on the same water.
That's the one down by the water. So, this would be the harder one, because they don't want to move it back. They want to stay where they are. And, that's the existing one, that's the flatter there. And they'll sit, you know, it's a cliff towards the back there, and sometime, sometimes there is no place to relocate it. It is in the best spot there were, that they, that feasibly is there. Sometimes it's two or three feet that you're just moving it back, and you can gain something there, but they were trying to keep it in place. And sometimes, the board just needs to go out and take a look, if anything, and that's why I scheduled the site plans for Saturday with the new board. I didn't know if you guys were going to want to look at all four of them, or maybe just one. If there was one to look at, this would be the one.
I'm myself, I think it would be good experience for everybody to go and look at.
To go out and look at one?
If you thought the term was just fun, looking at what you have there.
Yeah. With this particular one here, it's, and I will say, I mean, it's a tough lot.
They're kind of a homophobe?
They're, they got the flat spot there.
Yeah. It slopes down in every direction.
Every direction. I mean, there is something they could come back. So, usually, like I was saying early on, if me and the applicant agree, yeah, you can move back. Worst-case scenario is, the board says, "I want to go look at it." So, there was really no reason for them to come in tonight, if you're going to do a site walk Saturday and review it at your next meeting. So, it'll save them from coming in, and a lot of them live away, Massachusetts, Connecticut, wherever, and it's quite often, they have to take time off to come up here for Thursday night and stuff, but, so, a lot of them will try to do and get in the relocation before we come to the board and start from scratch, basically. If we can get it outside the 100, and there is a lot of buildable envelope outside of 100, but it's really not feasible, especially going behind the power lines and stuff like that, in this access down through here. So, to me, this would be a good one to go take a look at.
How close is it from the water?
I scaled 30 feet off our maps online, and it drops 30 feet and 30 feet, roughly.
So, did they have a survey done on this?
Yeah. This is Land Tech surveying, did this in the contours. And the steep slopes, when you're on a steep slope, they look steep. She thought this dropped 20 feet out here, and as you count the lines, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, maybe, depending on how you built, easily 10 to 12, but not 20. She thought the survey was wrong, and I'm like, "Ah, this is too detailed of a contour plan for, I would think, to have an error in it."
Is there an existing foundation?
Um, no, they would demo the whole thing and rebuild totally. So, some of the times you guys would do a relocation is when they're just jacking the house up and putting a new one under, and they'll have to take that existing camp and move it backwards. Another time for relocation is just if they wanted to do an addition on this, and they're pouring a foundation, then it would also go through you guys, too, to say, "Now is the time to move what you have back," or, "There's enough substantialness there that this addition doesn't make any difference." So, I think that's probably half of what your board will see as far as cases is relocations.
And we're going to make it next week, yeah?
Correct.
So, we could make the-
Site walk, and then pick this up the next one. That was my thoughts. And they were, they were okay with that. A lot of times, especially getting into September, October, November, for some reason, they just wake up and decide they need to demo and rebuild, and a lot of times, the contractors aren't aware that there's planning board review and things like that, and as you get pushed against the weather conditions and stuff, you try to help them out the best you can, but sometimes, it's just, you got, you got to go through the planning board. We try to get the stuff well in advance, so you guys had it, nothing's a rush, but, like I said, I think, it was probably 5:30 tonight, somebody came in with a package for a relocation. It's just an addition on the side of one, and they were hoping you guys would be able to look at it tonight, but we've got to have some time to put some stuff together for you guys. We try to get enough photos. Usually, the Google Earth is working on this, and that, especially in the last couple, I don't know why this is blank here tonight, but that tells as much as we can, and we just try to save you guys from doing site walks you don't need to do. So, I think if everybody agrees, we'll do a site walk on this one. Does Saturday work for most of us? As long as, and a lot of times, you know, the board can go out and we'll get documentation, we'll be able to relay back to, because we all have lives, and it's, you guys are volunteers, so it's hard to be making a meeting, then a Saturday, and then another meeting, and especially if we get into zoning ordinances, and we're doing workshops and stuff like that, it cuts dramatically into your time, that's for sure.
Your motion, form that.
Yeah, I think we should probably go along with that.
That's the-
First one.
First one. I made the motion to do a site walk, like, dang, Clifton Dale Road map, 112 Lot 22. And we'll be there Saturday, the Saturday through here.
Meet here at 10 o'clock, at 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock.
9 o'clock, town hall.
Yep. And then we'll figure out how we're going to all ride in our car and stay six feet apart.
I'm not familiar with Clifton Dale Road, well, they can tell me.
Great East.
Yeah. Off of Lake Side Drive.
Usually, I'll cut in off of Moose Pond, but that's a pretty tough road. We'll come in Mann Road and drop down in that way. It's tough to get one vehicle in there, so we'll find a place to conjugate and park and back in there or something like that.
You think we are going to take separate vehicles for our social business?
I got room for a couple in mind, and we'll just mask up.
Okay.
You hang your head out the window.
Now, the slutman made the decision, the few sidewalks have to be filmed, so you'll know as far as-
I think they already have. Yeah. We already did.
Okay.
I thought it was easier to cancel if we didn't need it, and we'll at least get that person lined up, ready to go, and- I might have napped, but did that, was there a second?
No, we're still with the first second.
Oh, we got a second. John seconds. Any more discussion? I thought I had Gavin say all in favor.
Again, all in favor of-
Thank you.
Saturday, 9 o'clock, town hall.
Awesome.
All right.
That's all I had. That's enough for tonight, I think, for you guys. There's a lot to it.
I have a question. The way things are looking, it looks like what we have in our meetings up here instead of downstairs, or at least for a while.
Yeah.
Maybe forever, you know? Having trouble picking up some of the stuff that you Google Maps, like you would downstairs and-
I thought I'd have a lot more technical difficulties. My laptop died at 4:30 this afternoon. It wasn't working. I did have my backup ready, and I had a- I did have my backup ready, and I had an extra projector. Over time, I think, you know, we'll talk to the selectmen about, we still use the projector downstairs three, four times a day. We're using that for the public more than we ever have, because we're meeting the public in that big room there. But I'd like to approach them and get a permanent projector put up and a much bigger screen. I'm okay with just a big sheet back there, so you guys in the back can see. Or I would imagine the camera, you probably can't even see this map on the camera, so... Yeah. And eventually, we'll be able to get to the board all sitting at a table together. And a lot of times, when we're looking at different stuff, we'll produce the documents in different colored paper. So if we're all got green paper, we all know we're looking at the same thing, and then we'll switch to blue or something like that. Especially all the zoning ordinances with different colors, just so we can follow along. It gets confusing quickly, and when you jump from one to another to another, especially a lot of you guys been working eight, 10, 12 hours, and, you know, whether you ate or you're just trying to catch a nap in between or something like that, it's tough, so... But we appreciate you guys putting your time in. But it'd be nice to be able to join at some tables together and sit at a table, so we can work as a team better.
One question about the start time. You guys started at 6 o'clock today?
Yeah, we talked about that. Will that work better for you or worse?
I kind of prefer seven, just because the, you know, stuff I was doing just came right here.
Yeah.
Especially in the summertime, seven, you know, seven works a lot better. In the winter, I'm like, either one would work, but...
Yeah. I didn't know with you, because you liked to...
Climate change, I'd love to stay at seven.
Yeah.
But of course, we can see what the rest of the board thinks, too.
Yeah. I thought, because I knew you had a thing to get to, to get out earlier, so I didn't know if that helped you or hurt you, but... Will six work for the next meeting for you? And then we'll look at it for October?
Uh, yeah. I guess so. It works for everyone else better. I mean, six is more like dinner time, but...
Yeah.
It works for everyone, I can definitely get it.
Yeah. Well, we'd be getting out at eight tonight versus nine.
Right.
So... That's all I had. Anybody else got anything? You got a lot of stuff to take home. And we'll try to get you some permanent name tags, too. We just gave you some paper ones for tonight. The blue folders, if you just give them to Christina on the way out, just leave them on the table, we'll pick them up. That'll have all your stuffs in it. And over time, we'll get to figure out if each person is going to want things differently. You'll stop by and pick them up. You'll like it emailed. Please, you know, do it this way, do it that way. And we'll see what's going to work for you guys and just get you, so it's not a hassle for you. We want to make it easy for you guys.
Christina, do you need to contact, she filled out?
I think she put emergency contact, too. Just in case something happens while you're with us, we don't call you wrong person by mistake. Dennis, you going to make one more motion?
I'm making a motion adjourned.
Thank you.